You didn't put enough vegetable in this rice. Okay, I'm gonna do it back there very soon around there. Vegetable will be there. If you eat the cake, you see it has enough sugar. Because they told me you people were lacking sugar. Your sister. Make sure enough sugars in the cake. But if you eat the cake, you get diabetes. Don't come here. Let me see a swallow. Like I said, the meat is still back there. Let me see a swallow that doesn't have messy for even bone. So if you swallow bone, there's a thing I'm going to do about it. Stop it. Stop it there. This crime is not complete without that negative aspect. Even a wunya, even a wunya. Don't let it go after this moment. It continues. It continues. Papa, I want to take special attention about you. Like I pointed out earlier. They have a protein called the Megopotash. I'll give you a package to go home with.
Okay.
When we were growing, we had wet horn. We were so fond of even wunya even in hot season. I can tell you the color, but I won't pronounce it.
Happy birthday!
Here come my daughter, my dearest daughter! Longest, longest time.
You don't give seventy as well. In fact, Papa, you look fifty.
The things you send across, I absorb them. I enjoy them. What is this?
This is your birthday. Look at it now.
Hey! All this for me?
No, oh.
Okay, hold it, hold it. No, no, welcome.
No. Any more, we are greeting you, welcome, welcome.
Welcome. Your countenance changed a lot of sudden. What are they?
Papa, please, I'm going inside. I want to stay inside for now.
You don't want to elongate the happiness you are having here. Here is your place, not inside. If you go inside, how do you have fun? Why should you go inside when we are here?
Papa, why should I stay here? Why should I stay here?
Many reasons.
Did I not tell these fools something? Did I not tell these useless girls what I wanted and what I do not want? And they went ahead and did the one I said I did not want?
What happened?
Did I not tell you that I wanted this party to be an all-sisters affair? I told you I wanted it to be something intimate between us. No husbands. Did I not say it? But, uh-uh! No! You must do your own. Who are these strangers? Who are these strangers? Are they not husbands? I'm asking you, are they not husbands? So, 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 you people are trying to tell me that the family of Marzi Abel cannot organize a party or anything without some people inviting strangers in the name of husbands to attend?
No! The more we stay together, the merrier. As any body did to, just forget it. Let's go on with this birthday.
That is why I think it is better for me to generally go inside. In fact, let me respect my old age and go inside. Because if I stay here, my body will be hurting. I'll be looking for who to slap. I will go crazy. Papa, I will cover the birthday. But if you want me to stay, you can ask these things that call the sales husband to get out of this house. Just allow me to stay inside on my own. She cannot because of I don't want to spoil your birthday.
You've spoiled it already. By uttering it from your mouth, you've spoiled it.
I think if you are the problem, let just start.
How can I do? Who invited you? Who is celebrating? Did I tell anybody to go? I'm planning even to have to bring more, more things to swallow, to eat, to drink and all that. I want to make you pregnant. You're talking about... Forget it. I can handle that.
Papa, don't worry, don't worry. I know what her problem is. Her problem is because she's not married. She simply be tired.
Shut up, back to mouth. Just because you're lucky to have married. You're saying that you prefer employer, let your husband come. It is a lesson. How can you wish that bad to you?
Let's not spoil your surprise birthday. Because we have plenty things to eat and drink.
What's with drinking? There's so much to eat. There's plenty food and chicken inside here. Let's eat and enjoy ourselves. Carry on, carry on, don't worry. Enjoy yourself. Which one should I bring for you?
Who is lacking meat? Who is lacking whatever?
Which one should I give?
Feel happy, feel happy.
My husband be happy now, be happy. Which one should I bring? There's sweet meat, please. And rice sitting side. Let's bring more for you people.
Let me just be sure something is not going wrong mentally with my daughter. Because such things happen, you know?
She's part of us.
Are you not participating in this? If I do, you know?
She's part of us.
She should have told me that she was hungry. How can you reject her when you come back to take her food? Does she starve over there?
Let's just be eating.
You know, do you know my plan before you came in? To impregnate you with drink, with rice, with vegetable, all these drinks to get you pregnant. But that was a...
Let us be happy.
I still insist.
You see? You're happy now. You see, you're happy? Of course, he's just like me. Which one should I bring for you? We are not returning all these drinks. We have paid for them.
Give your... This is your doing. My wife did this.
It is my brother's surprise birthday.
Eji Mafa the pretty baby. Ah ha, I'm a rich child. Come and see Eji Mafa. I beg you be aware of her. Eji Mafa with her problem. Ah ha, I'm a rich child. Eji Mafa na flented to her bush. I beg you be aware of her. Now who go come, Eji Mafa? Ah ha, I'm a rich child. Now who go show her love? I beg you be aware of her. Eji Mafa on the move. One woman has several troubles in a day. If he enter her trap, she goes show you, baby. If not fight he wants, she is ready for you. What a man who can do, Eji Mafa can do better. Boom, boom, Eji Mafa. He when he work here. Boom, boom, Eji Mafa. Oh, yeah, let me go give. Boom, boom, Eji Mafa. He when he work here. Boom, boom, Eji Mafa. Oh, yeah, let me go give. Eji Mafa the pretty baby. Ah ha, I'm a rich child. Come and see Eji Mafa. I beg you be aware of her. Eji Mafa with her problem. Ah ha, I'm a rich child. Eji Mafa na flented to her bush. I beg you be aware of her. Now who go come, Eji Mafa? Ah ha, I'm a rich child. Now who go show her love? I beg you be aware of her.
No. Is my eyes telling me? Or my eyes are lying to me right now? Who is this person that I'm seeing? Is my eyes telling me? Ekena, my childhood friend. Is this not Ekena? Hold me, hold me. Did you bet with crayfish? Because the crayfish smell is very strong on your body. Eji Mafa, I can see you haven't changed one bit. With this your bad mouth. Anyway, I am now a married woman. So I'm coming from the market. I went to buy crayfish and fish to prepare in salad soup for my husband. Hey, that is good though. I have my own husband. He does not stay in Nigeria. In fact, he stays abroad, in the UK. Just wait, wait a minute, let me call him. So that you talk to him and greet him. You know, I've been telling him a lot about you. I'm happy to see you. I'm very sure he'll be so happy to talk to you right now. I cannot believe this. It's ringing, it's ringing. He's not picking. Maybe he's busy. Wait, wait, wait. What is the time set? Ah, I mean, cup. This time, he's usually very busy in the office. I know. You know, he has a very good job abroad. A very good job that pays him big money. I know, I know. Men like to be busy. Even the man, my husband. My husband likes me. That man is wonderful. My husband is a good man. Can you imagine? He wakes up very early to bed at 8:00. My husband, if I'm sitting now, Dim will remind me to drink my medicine. If it was only me, will I remember? Do you know what he normally do? He said a woman should be walking in the husband's shadow. And the woman should not walk too fast though. He should be walking side by side. Because if she now walks fast, who will protect her? Who will protect her? My Dim likes me. It's okay. The only thing I have heard you say here is Can't you say one word without calling your husband's name? Don't you have a life outside your husband? It's not good though. It's not good though. What can I do? You know Dim is the closest person to me. There she goes again. Okay, sorry, before, let me change topic. What are you doing in the village? Correct, babe. See level, see your pickup. Level, don't change. It is not pickup. It is truck, truck. Your primary education is a complete waste. Waste of time and money. You did not learn anything. Chakum, nothing. You are still that empty head that I did. Hi, Dim. My husband call me. This man loves me. He cannot stay two hours without being... So that we, we that our husbands are not around. We that our husbands are in a very far country. We should go and buy room. Tie ourselves on the neck and die. Dim, my husband.
What took you so long? I've been worried.
Sorry, I had to wait for the fish tellers. You know, they come all the way from Onicha. And I wanted to buy your special crayfish for your Mr. Last.
You know how to take care of your husband.
Do you remember my friend? I just remember something. I'm in a hurry. He heard maybe that something is boiling. I'm coming, I'm coming, yeah? I'm coming, later, later, later.
Why is she in a hurry?
Bye bye, oh.
Okay, bye bye, bye bye.
Bye bye, oh. Bye bye. Hi, Joseph. Joseph, he got one. If you like, pick my call. If you like, don't pick it. The only thing I know is that any day I see you, Joseph, I will kill you. I will kill you myself. You are wicked. Stupid man, stupid man, that is what you are. After this behavior, you come back. You come back, then I will teach you a lesson. That girl, when she was standing that long time. What is it? You are married, so I should kill myself because you are married. Since you are married, I will not hear work. In fact, let me even tell you before. I will not step an inch out of this compound till I leave for the city of Monti. What is all this now?
What is it? I hope there's no problem.
Wait, let me even ask you village girls. What is wrong with the girls in this village? What is their problem? The only thing they know how to do is to get married. Every day they are getting married. Every day they are getting married. And then they cannot keep their mouth shut. They will talk about it. They'll broadcast it. Anybody they see, whether you ask them or you don't ask them, they will tell you, ah ah, hanako. Is marriage an achievement? Now I want to know, is it an achievement? They don't even have anything to show for their life. Nothing. No car, no job. They don't even have any plans for their life. They don't have plans for the future. They don't even have plans to own any property. The only thing they know how to do is to marry. And then give birth. Bushamo, it can't have a free will. That is it. They give birth without planning. That is the reason there is high rise of criminals in this country. Give birth to criminals everywhere. Making my job very hard. Every day I'm suffering pursuing one criminal or the other because of the foolish girls in this village. If they have the decency and the sense to keep their legs short, there will be a low increase in criminality. And my job will be easy for me. Okay, ready?
But that's not the problem.
It is a problem, oh. Speak for yourself. It is a problem because you don't know how I suffer every day pursuing criminals from one end of the city to the other. Speak for yourself because you just have two children. At your age, you have five. Five children, one case was so. How many did you train? How many are in school? You, you have three children already. And the way I'm looking at you, it's like you are pregnant. It's not about bringing our children, it's about training them. Listen, all these girls are about battered. If you girls in this village will learn how to keep your legs short. We show for. Rubbish! They're not better than you. The only thing they know how to talk. This is a lady, good morning. My husband is a noria. He will greet you back. My husband is, my husband is. Rubbish!
Chama, you've heard her now. How many children do you have? You have heard what she said, oh. Close this your leg.
And it's true, it looks like you are pregnant.
If I'm pregnant, they do your giving. But it's two now. You, you have five. Close your legs, oh.
I'm doing well at my age. She's just here shouting, shouting, shouting as if there's a bee inside her dress that is biting her.
If you ask her, who will lie at?
Stop giving birth. That is the advice. Our elder sister does not want us to keep giving birth.
Not just that, oh, don't marry at all.
The situation you found yourself yesterday was very pitiful. Exhibiting anger to the generation. Angry with everybody. Especially your brothers-in-law. Did they commit any offense? No. Then against your own sisters because they are having what you're not having.
No, no.
What is no?
No, Papa. I'm not agree, no, 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 no.
Allow me to finish. Everything about your anger has to do with the Joseph you're supposed to be with that you can't find again. That is the truth. But if it's not Joseph, it can be another man. You go and marry again. You know? See, let me just tell you why your mother named you Eji Mafa. Eji Mafa is a male name. Because when she was pregnant of you, she expected a male child. But it turned out to be a girl. But she insisted that you must answer Eji Mafa. You know, she liked that name so much. So everything about your behavior is a... Bragadi shu, bragada, all, all that.
Maybe it means I'm supposed to be a man.
That's what I'm saying. Must you now continue behaving like a man who has lost control? Instead of the woman you are, you're a girl, you're a woman. Nobody has peace here because of your character. Nobody.
Papa, I will wait for Joseph. I will wait for Joseph. Papa, the money I spent sending Joseph abroad will not be a waste. So after spending my hard-earned money to take him abroad, then one woman, they will put here, no, no. One woman will now come and marry him as an international man and be posing as only did you, but don't you both? Then me that did all the work, me that suffered all the suffer, me that spent the money, will now end up with a local man. By him, I'm a mass. Woman, they mass now. She will not die here. She will not die here. One day, he will come back. He will come back here and I'll be here waiting for him. And Papa, eh? If Joseph does enter this country, I will arrest him. Hey, I will arrest him. I will arrest him. Let me even ask you. What if Joseph does not come back? So you're going to remain like this, like a sick baby? You will not marry? Are you talking? I'm asking you. Yeah, Effikee, are you talking? I say you have the mind to talk up here. You are talking. You have said so. Okay, since you want to talk up here, you want to talk as only come on me face. Only chara who, let us talk it to the full. Effikee, who introduced me to Joseph? Open your mouth and answer. Who introduced me to Joseph? When you are the one who open that your mouth. Oh, now talk a sugar. Joseph is a good man. My husband has a very good relative. It was you and that your, your, your foolish husband that packaged me like this, bam, into the hands of Joseph. And now you have the mouth to talk. So we do bad, eh? Me and my husband, we do bad to introduce you to Joseph to marry you. It's not a bad character that made him not to marry. It's a bad. No, when you are saying bad, add very. Because what you did, you and your husband, what you did is a very, 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 very bad thing. Yes! It's in a while we are daughter. You don't need any incantation to know that that introduction that you and your husband did was very wicked, very evil, from the pit of hell and very foolish. Yes! Anyway, in fact, Papa, please, please, please. Die this talk. I want to go and sleep. Because tomorrow, I'll be leaving for the city. So I don't have time for this kind of family nonsense meeting. I'm tired. I'm tired. Yes, so you people said I'm bitter, where? You said I'm bitter? Yes, I am bitter. I have, in fact, I agree. I am bitter. And why you're saying bitter? Add very to it. Because I am very, 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 very bitter. Very bitter! Okay, so now that I have accepted that I am bitter with my whole full chest, are you going to solve my problem for me? Are you going to solve it? Are you? Are you? Are you going to solve this? A man I gave my heart to, took my money and disappeared into the mouth of the repertory. And you say I should not be bitter? Thank God! Process. Papa, talk to Eji Mafa. Old age is coming, oh. She cannot be in this house and remain as a attack. See her, see man opus. Hey! Effikee? What did you just say? Man opus. Hey! Effikee, it's not man opus. It is called men opus. Joseph, you always be here as if you know everything. It is man opus, one man. The plural is men. You think I don't know that one? Man is man opus. Effikee, you are lying. It is men opus, two men inside pus. It's only two men will not marry one woman. No, it's two men inside pus. She has to make choice of different men. You always claim that you know it, you don't know it, and you proclaim it right. I bet, it's man opus. It's man opus.
We can summarize it, women opus. So the whole question, women opus.
It is men that has a, it is a women's pus. It's men opus. Now two men go enter one woman, opera one man. One man pus. It's men opus, Effikee, I know this one. Men opus.
It's not a small pus, sorry. A pus big enough to contain man and woman.
Different men.
Pus.
Eh? Papa was...
Oh, Joseph. Ooh! Joo joo. Joo joo. Joo joo, ma niya. Ooh! Joo wa.
Oh?
Josephi.
Who's that song?
Josephi.
Joo joo. Josephi. Josephi.
Joo?
Eh?
I joo, I joo.
Sorry, where is the you? Your father? Eh?
Joo wa.
Where is Joseph, your father?
Hai! Ooh! You're the enemy of progress, enemy of progress! You just took the right time to come and wake somebody up from heaven, oh go no!
Eh, so the Joseph you just talked about, is he back from heaven or from where?
Before I woke up, I was with him in heaven.
Has he come back now? You were together there, is he here now with us?
Jep, kwaya.
Mm hmm. I don't know.
Yeah, nah. Um, see, let's first the one truth. If men in the city have abandoned you, why not go for the in this village?
Yes.
Eh? Yes, a way out.
Hmm, Jemofogo. Marry a village man. Here, God forbid!
Papa? One how? This her insult is becoming too much, she should not insult us again. Me kekeke da na. Nuka sona ge.
Crazy!
No! Did I call your name?
No way.
Did I call your name? Oh, Jero! Oh, Kuma! So you know you married a village man? Oh, you know! Oh, so in your mind, you think marrying a village local town that cannot wash his throats is his husband? Abon dije pata, abon dije pata, chinek bo baka. Da esin ya na avau, dek prava.
Oh, no way, no way.
Da Jemofogo! Da Jemofogo! Da Jemofogo! I will shout! I will do!
I'm just joking, yeah. I should be allowed to be in control.
How could I expect a human? She should not be insulting us! Papa? I say, this is rubbish! This is rubbish! Eh? I want rubbish! This is what it is for. Jero, so, Okuma, one ban she. Oh, for her talk, my younger sister. Oh, you see you can fight me, okay? You want to fight me? You think by now maybe because you have eh 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 husband and children, okay? Papa? Okume teko bebe? Your birthday is over, okay? You are finished because it's your birthday that brought us here. Kwa gugu, etago kek, nwa manya, usopali ho. I am living. I am living this, 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 today, 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 today. You never is mommy.
Stop going now! People is begging you to stay. Go! Go! Somebody is begging you to suspend. Stop going, go! Stop talking, troublemaker!
I'm going! I don't know. I'm going, people want to fight here. Ah ah! Hey!
Easy, that's not the right choice. It's a thing that should be handled in, in peace. Eh? Do you know one problem I have with you? That you always behave like a man. From where there should be peace, you're making it to happen a crisis. Eh? Is this name, Jemofogo, attracting you?
Papa, please, my name is not affecting me anything, please.
Do you know why?
I am a woman. A full woman! It is not my fault that I, I, I am strong. I, I, I don't take nonsense. Papa, please, they push me like that for me because I like myself like that.
I'm a woman. I'm a woman.
Since you are insisting on Joseph, can you tell him to, eh, bring snap for me? Mayan dioke ya, oh? A man even you probably say no. Listen, the man you're talking about, I should be able to be given a, a, a drink.
Papa? I have your husband. I have a love and you know. It's just a man woman now, which I don't know.
The issue is that you prove it. If you have it in your mind, in your mouth, oh there, you want a proof, let him come. Joseph, biya, yamomoya.
Papa, who dash monkey banana?
Eh?
Who dash monkey banana? Oni ebito! Hey! The husband, where? It's okay.
Who do you respect yourself and stop talking?
Laughing at you? Nobody can laugh at you. At least you cannot see laughter in any, any mouth, yeah? It's a serious case, want to start and end quickly. Get you a, a, a chip, man, oh no? A difficult position.
Eh? I don't dare people at all. Don't dare people at all! People, get out, get out!
That will not solve it.
Hey!
It will not solve it.
Oh, one man, one, one, I am chipi, yeah? Oh, Kuma, respect yourself, oh! Jemofogo is our elder sister. You are not the fault to be married in this house, oh! We all are married, but we don't talk to her like that. I don't know what your problem is. I want to give you enough, put that, that, I'm not pulling it, no, spare.
Eh? I didn't put it in my name also. Tumbon, tumbon. Where up o glee, o gyo ga, to get to go glee si. Eh be in a, we hope you see, see. See, see. Hey yeah! Mbanu. Kama mili agi lim, ya gi uno. Oh? My house cannot be on fire because somebody's husband is abroad, not thinking about her again. You help you chekini in the, in here, ba one. Don't break my heart, oh. Joseph! Josephi!
Yeah?
Josephi!
Eh?
Joseph, how many times did I call you?
Akuborata ke korom.
Kuborata, where? Kuborata? Joseph, when are you coming back? What are you still doing in London? What are you still doing in London, Joseph? I'm asking you. When you come back? Eh? When are you coming back to marry me, Biko? Do you know the insult I get from my father on a daily basis? Do you know how my, 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 my siblings, in fact, the whole family? Do you know how they insult me every day because of you? Eh?
Ne ma famo London na, che gomja alunwa. Eh, eh gi ge jilunwa eh? Ke eh gi, eh gi ge jilum. Okay, name, sorry, 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 sorry. Eh gomge ja loge. Eh mele mistake, wa ra no, sorry. Eh, eh gomja loge.
Where are you now?
Akua nom, akua nom na Chelsea. Ano na Chelsea, ne is nipu. Kamana motonge, chimote gomge, gi biya lo ono gi. Acham ke ma na, ne gui gi, tutemunga akomo, boro. Eh, you're the name.
Yeah, Joseph, speak English! Speak English, da chi neka ogoku! Speak English, before thunder will fire you, you are mad! What do you mean by that? Ah ah! You see, not this side abroad, everybody goes and, and they are speaking good English that you are in, or you can never hear but block. Ah ah! I've been speaking English to you and you be replying me u, 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 in that your own language. Respect yourself, oh! But you won't go, respect yourself there, oh! Eh? Do you want to go? That is what you have been using to trick me. Oh, you ja, oh. Take your time, oh.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I've heard you, I've heard you. Yeah. Alright, let me, let, can I? Yeah, let me talk to you later then.
What, 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 what did you? Yeah, Jo- Joseph!
Ah, chi neke na, wait. Oh, go him, what, what, oh, go him na man na ga, oh. What a car, monodro, go him na, piano London eh, aga just, wa ra no, okay, I'm well. I bewa na, send. Eh, go, wa ra no, wa ra na, go ge ja fo.
Hey! This boy is trying me, oh! This, this foolish boy is trying me, oh! The worst part is that I love him. I love him foolishly. I, I love him too much. Eh, sure, Joseph, respect yourself, oh! Just come back here and marry me, ah ah! I used my, my, my life savings, all the money I have to send you abroad. So you, you more just come back and marry me, oh! I'll be fast about it because my clock is ticking. Eh? Hey! This boy wants to, this boy wants to frustrate me. This, 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 this boy, this boy is driving me crazy! Hey! Eh? And to add salt, to add salt to injury, that to use less and foolish napal that I have. We be playing love play with that her criminal boyfriend in my face. Hana palasem! Anyway, I can remove, Mungoma. I know how to deal with them. Both of them are akamkes. I know what to do. Like him, pardon them. They don't even have Papa's strength now. Hey! Stop it! Stop it! Hey! I said, stop it! Stop, stop it! Come on, come, calm down! Ah! What is wrong with you? You not see me? You want jam me?
Madam, deputy, see now.
I go wash you snap!
Madam, what?
Where your councilman meet? You're a crazy, oh!
Madam, madam, I don't have.
Oh! You not get that?
I don't have.
And you come to trouble.
Madam, I'm taking this now.
Take it if you have. Wait, come, oh! You just struggle with me because in your mind, you think I'm a woman. Eh? So you have not heard of a Jemofogo? You have not heard of a Jemofogo? Okay? You are talking now. Don't go make I see! Don't go!
Madam, do you? Madam, 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 do me!
Stop! You like that, they joke. Akwaya? You're a man, they just see.
Madam, do me!
Hey!
Madam, do me! Madam, do me! Madam, do me! Madam, do me!
Yeah!
Please sit down!
Hey! Come here! Take him out!
Take my madam! You don't do that!
Carry him out!
Don't move! Move you now!
Take him out!
Come on! Come on! Come on, there ya! Come on, there ya! Come on! Come on, there ya! Come on, there ya!
No, no, do it, what is? No! 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 No!
Eh?
I will use you as a weapon and staple today. I will use you as a strap and a strap today.
You go go! Shut up!
Oh, shut up there! Shut up there! You say, I will use, close your mouth! I will use you as a strap and a strap today. Well done, guys. Well done, that was good. So leave him here with me, hmm? People should go. Go and find more offenders. Catch them and bring them here, hmm? Leave this one with me. I am capable, he's not going anywhere. Your councilor that brought me here knows I am capable. That is why I was posted to this task unit. So just go!